Are we ready to go with the cameras?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's still a good question.
We'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight. Appreciate y'all joining us. Um, we'll go ahead and get this meeting started. You know what? I forgot.
You did the prayer last time.
Yes, that's what I'm saying. We'll go ahead and, yeah, we'll ask Councilman Baird to give us a prayer. Chaplain.
Yeah.
Would you give, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Absolutely.
Okay, then we'll go to that point. Go ahead.
Our dear heavenly father, we're grateful for this day. We're grateful for this opportunity we have to meet as a city council. We're grateful for the attendance of those who are here tonight and those who serve in our community and throughout our nation in uniform and in public service. We're grateful for the many blessings that we enjoy as a city and for the opportunities that we have here. We ask you to please bless us in this meeting that thy spirit would attend us to, help us to make the best decisions for this community in the best interest of those who we serve. We love the United States for these things and we will, thy son Jesus Christ.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as far as the role, Paul, I've forgotten mention that Councilman White is not with us tonight, so he's asked to be excused. We appreciate the other council members being here. Um, we do have the minutes of our last meeting, February eighteenth. Are there any amendments or corrections that need to be made to those?
I didn't see any. I had to approve unless someone else saw something.
I'll second that.
There we have a motion seconded by Councilman Goodrich. All in favor?
Aye.
Are we opposed? Okay, next is our public comment period. Um, we have an opportunity for the members of the public and, uh, address the council if they'd like to do so. You can take up to three minutes. Are there any here tonight that would like to take that opportunity?
It's my understanding is that the pickleballers are not happy with, uh, our six-foot high fence that the windscreen gave me from just two weeks ago. It's my understanding they wish to add on for peak. As you go through these inches.
Todd Farley for the record, just helping you out there.
Yeah, Todd Farley for the record. Okay, as you can go through these pictures, you can obviously see this, this court runs north and south. And it was a basketball court, basketball courts ran east and west. The only reason that I could see they could ever want a screen, which I was told was for, for sun, I don't see it. That the trees are taller than, they're taller than the fans.
Okay, I, I was in a meeting where we talked about this with the pickleball community, and I think maybe you've misunderstood what they said. So they, who was there? Aaron, you weren't there. It was, um, yeah.
So pickleballers don't come in here and have meetings like everybody else that they, they got their own schedule.
There's an arts park and rec committee meeting.
It's open to the public.
That's open to the public.
Well, I'd like to know when these meetings are because I live across the street. I'm not trying to be hard here.
Well, let me tell you what they wanted, because I think what they wanted you will appreciate. So they appreciated what you came in and said. What they asked is instead of doing it, how fa, how tall were you saying?
It's professional. This was the best one, six-foot, that was voted number one windscreen by pro pickleball players last year. I brought it in. I was ready to saddle the whole thing up, and I thought I'd give JR, and thank you very much, JR. I appreciate that.
Yeah, and I still need to get even with the city on that, but, um, anyway, finish your thoughts. I think it was.
So what they asked is instead of going that full height, if they could do half that height so that people could still see the pickleball play if they're on the playground with their kids.
Six foot is a legal screen? That's, that's a legal windscreen for a pickleball court. If they want to go four foot, I don't have a problem with four foot if they want to go four foot.
That's what, did it come back to you, Aaron? Is that the recording?
But then we got that other stuff that's hanging up there up high. Why is that up there? You know, that's, that, you got me lost.
I think the, I think the best venue for this would be with the arts parks and rec and talking with the pickleballers. And we do appreciate the offer, and it does look much better than.
Already it's looking better.
Yeah, some of the other things.
Well, I, I appreciate you guys. I mean, you know, this is the oldest park we've done, and it's got some of the sweetest venues. You can ask for more. You got basketball, thank you very much. You got pickleball, thank you again. You've got playground for small kids.
Volleyball.
You've got, yeah, you've got volleyball. You've got a place for the kids to play frisbee or soccer or wherever they want to play. You got a pavilion. You've got a beautiful little baseball park right there. You got swimming. If mom wants to go down to the library, it's on the same block. I mean, you've got all the entities right there. That's the most beautiful part you could ever hope to have. All I'm doing, folks, is just trying to keep it clean, please.
Yeah.
You know, that's all I'm saying. I, I, I tried my damnedest for thirty years, you know?
Well, we appreciate that.
I would like to get in on your meetings when, when you have your next one.
They are the third Thursdays at six o'clock. And this next one, they're gonna start being right this time at the Innovation Hub, just right there on, at the park.
So the old library.
The old library.
Is the Innovation Hub, and that's what I hold.
Yeah.
The third Thursdays at six o'clock.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, but thank you. I'm, I, you know, I just want that park to stay clean. That's all I'm after.
I appreciate that.
It's looking much better.
Thank you. I'm gonna sign your little thing here that you know I was here.
Yeah, if, uh, we do have a sign-in sheet, if you have it signed, please do so. Let's go, is there anybody else that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll turn the time over to Chief, Hawkins.
That sounds great. We have Officer Swearingen. Officer Swearingen. Officer Danny Wheeler. Danny just graduated from the Postle Police Academy last Thursday. She's just raw and ready to go. Let's stand right here. And to the right, repeat after her.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and law.
Of the state of Utah.
Of the state of Utah.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same and defend them against enemies.
To the same and defend them against enemies.
Foreign, uh, foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my integrity.
I will never betray my integrity.
My character.
My character.
For the public's trust.
For the public's trust.
I will always have courage.
I will always have courage.
To uphold myself.
To uphold myself.
And others accountable.
And others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
Upholding the values of my community.
Upholding the values of my community.
And the agency I serve.
And the agency I serve.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of a peace officer.
Discharge the duties of a peace officer.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
I told you it was short.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay. Just want you to know Danny, is it Danny?
Danny, yep.
He just joined the best force in the basin.
Oh, I agree.
Probably the state.
I agree. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, let's move to the next item. We have public hearing for Roosevelt Animal Shelter, be scheduled addition. Rose, there you are.
Yep.
Um, you wanna go ahead and take your way?
Yeah, I'll give you a brief rundown. So essentially what this is, is adding the vaccines so the public has access to it. So it's a vaccine that UNIDAT now requires for cats to get before they're fixed, so it kind of creates a barrier for the public. And we wanna eliminate that cost as much as we can to entice them to get them fixed. So this is the EPLV vaccine, more commonly known as feline zoonemia. Most veterinarians do not consider this a poor vaccine, or kind of surprise UNIDAT requires this, but we want to do what we can to help the public get their cats fixed. So most places, you're looking at forty-five to a hundred dollars. We can actually purchase this vaccine for roughly nine to ten dollars. So what we're proposing is offering it to public at fifteen dollars, so that way they have access to it and we still make a little bit of money off of it.
Any questions? Seeing none, would entertain a motion to go into public hearing?
Yeah, I move we go into public hearing to, uh, over the Roosevelt Animal Shelter fee, schedule addition.
Okay. Motion. Second by Councilman Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll consider ourselves in a public hearing. Are there anyone, is there anyone here that would like to talk about or comment on this fee? Seeing none.
I move we go back to regular council meeting.
Okay, also, and second by Councilman Allen again. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll consider ourselves back in regular council meeting. Is there any further discussion by the council?
I, I think it's a really good idea. I'm glad Rose is, uh, and her group is look, kind of looking ahead, but also, uh, helping by not, you know, we're not doing it for free. We're, they're working a little bit, but the big thing is making it available, so I appreciate being proactive. So I move we approve.
We have a motion to approve.
I'll say.
Second by Councilman Allen. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Two animals. Thank you.
That was easy.
All right, Roosevelt City Code Enforcement Ordinance, that's Lieutenant Tucker.
Yep, we got Danny up here, and we also wanted to give some stats for the animal shelters.
Okay. Are you gonna do the whole meeting, Danny?
Yeah.
You will be? Well, you're a trooper. I, I need to get with you as soon as the meeting's over, talk about, you're the ordinance officer, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for those of you that don't know, Danny Butcher, he's the ordinance officer. He's gonna give some stats on how stuff's gonna go, and you guys can have some questions.
Uh, so I'm here, the total, um, and some of this accounts before I started doing the code enforcement. There's, um, a hundred and forty-nine there that's closed. Um, since today, that's been updated to a hundred and seventy-one that have been closed. Um, there were currently, um, forty-three that are open, and there's one new one that needs to be, um, addressed later this week.
So by closed, meaning they took care of it or the, or the?
That they've taken care of it or that they're in the, like, very final stages of it, of it being cleaned up and end up with, yeah. Um, and so kind of going more into that, the, so animal control section, that, I think that's the next part. Okay, um, so, uh, we can just go to the map then. So that map for reference is just kind of, uh, a scatter plot. Not all of the dots on that are necessarily super accurate with the location, um, but the majority of them are. And that's the different locations throughout Roosevelt that we are working on code enforcement, um, violations. In the far left, the one that's like way outside of Roosevelt is obviously incorrect, based on that. Um, and then, so just diving in on some of these, so the weed and debris category, um, there are thirty-two closed on that. There are twenty-seven in progress, uh, with the one new one given that category. There are, uh, for the residential area issues, there are forty-one that are closed and ten in progress. Um, for other code enforcement, for things that don't really fall into a certain category, there are eighteen that are closed and two in progress. And then for commercial area issues, there are two that are closed, um, and no particular cases. Um, and then for animal control, this is like, uh, parking dogs, there are four in progress, and that's something that we have just recently added on that, so.
What was that category again?
Uh, so that's the animal control, um, it's not showing on there, but, yeah. Do you have any for roosters? That would probably fall under, under animal control as well.
So, um, so is parking dogs an issue? Like, is there, is there code against that, or, or is that more of the nuisance ordinance?
Yeah, it falls under the nuisance ordinance.
Okay. So we could batch roosters and dogs under nuisance and possibly even some of the other noise. Is noise, would that fall under nuisance as well, or is that a different issue?
So, yeah, Roosevelt doesn't really have a specific noise on that, so it's just a nuisance. It's just a noise.
Good to know.
Nuisance, can be a lot of stuff. You can almost put anything in there. It's a danger, noisy smells.
Okay.
So it looks like the, the most common is probably the weeds, debris.
Yeah.
So getting people to clean up their yards and.
Yep, and, uh, you know, Dan's been great. We send the letters, so it's really a soft kind of, you know, you're kind of in violation, and then Dan works with them, try to get them in. And the new ordinance, the petition, so we can get, uh, so it's, it's, it's working together to get it done.
Good.
I will say, I had someone text me yesterday saying they got another, the same house, Cory Taylor, um, five hundred and Lagoon, and I had the fridge just taken off, and somebody took the bus, but they got another letter, and she's hired someone to come and clean the yard tomorrow, so she asked me to check, so I, it's working. I think the letters are, are the right, I think he chose the right venue or right, uh, not venue, but right.
Right approach, the right step.
Right.
Yeah, just say, hey, this is a concern we want to, we'd like you to take care of this, and then, uh, there's potential for, you know, I don't ever want to catch somebody, but if, if it continues, obviously, yes, we'd wanna go to the next steps, but I think that's awesome. I just thought it was cool. I got, I got a text, "Hey, just so you know, I've hired someone to clean it up. Can you check?"
He thinks you're the spy, Tom.
And she's up in, well, she's up in Alaska, so, uh, it's her family home, that, that her brother died, and nobody, nobody's living there, and she can't sell it because of some title issues, and she's trying to work that out, but anyway, she's getting the letter, so it's going to the right person is the point, but I think it's, it's a good vehicle to let people know.
Well, I think it's been, it's much needed for a long time. Rose was doing this for a little while, and it's definitely not a fun job, but it's definitely needed in our community, so we appreciate all your efforts, and it's easy for me now when somebody called me, which I'm going to relay to you after the meeting, um, and has a concern, that we have somebody specialized in that, and then we can go to and, and have take care of that, and that group did a great job, so thank you.
And you're seeing great improvements.
Yeah. I was just curious on the animal shelter, how's that going with, like, the stray animals and things?
A lot of here.
Yeah.
They're gonna share tax?
Yep.
Perfect.
Did you do anything?
I think you did.
Thank you.
So at the animal shelter, we had approximately one thousand and eighty animals come in last year. It's roughly the same as the year before, so we luckily didn't increase it a lot. Didn't probably decrease either. Um, four hundred and sixty-four dogs, six hundred and eight cats, and then a few, like, other rabbits, guinea pigs, and all that. Four and four ones. Approximately forty-eight percent came from Roosevelt City limits, fifty-two came from Duschen County limits. There were some intakes that we didn't have the intake jurisdiction and everything, so there's a little variation there. We're not sure the exact exact, but it's approximately there, and then our claim rate from December twenty twenty-three went from eighteen percent in twenty twenty-four, it was fifty-seven percent, so that was good. More people were coming and getting their animals. They were going home. Our adoption rate's up roughly five percent, um, from the previous year. And then as far as, like, the age groups, um, in twenty twenty-three, we had fifty-fifty percent approximately, like, puppies, kittens, to animals over six months. Um, and then it dropped to forty-sixty, so we take that to mean potentially, like, less puppies, kittens, and everything being brought in, hopefully less being born. And then our live outcomes were up two percent. We went from ninety-four percent to ninety-six percent.
And what was that one again?
Uh, our live outcomes, like adoptions, claims, anything that resulted in, like, a live outcome. And then our non-live outcomes, the majority of them were sick cats. Um, we had thirty-one sick cats that unfortunately were either euthanized or they didn't care. There's a lot of different reasons for that. Um, we are trying to work on ways to fix that, make that even less. We are trying to get some kennels in our back building, so we can separate our unit takes from our general population, kind of. Not a great reason there, and we do think one of the reasons, like, we do have still out views, we do have a pretty high staff turnover rate, which results in sanitation breaches, like, when we're trying to train the new employees and get everything going wrong there. Approximately, we had approximately a hundred and sixty-two percent turnover rate with, like, our eight positions, with, like, the manager, system manager, keeping animal control. Um, two hundred and sixty percent with just, like, the five full-time cleaners. And that's pretty much everything.
Well, it sounds like you're improving all the time, and turnover is a very difficult thing to deal with.
Yeah.
So appreciate all you do, and glad to see that those members are improving, even though that it's hard to find people and time and get people to stay. It's a much-needed service for our community and super grateful for all you do.
Just kind of, how often are we taking animals out to Provo for the?
So for the ordinance being your point, usually about twice a month this, for the numbers.
And about how many animals are going?
Usually, I know we're talking about sixteen, twenty-four.
Wow.
Awesome.
That is awesome. I'm glad, I'm glad we were able to, that it's working.
Flows are going, still kicking.
It looks like everything's going in the right direction, too. I mean, the, the adoption rate or the people reclaiming their animals, that went up quite a bit, so.
We're getting quite a few taking on the chips, like?
Yeah, I think that's a big reason that it helped a lot, is because when they come in, if they've been in for them, you know, they're shipped and can get them out immediately, so that's helped a lot.
That's good. Good job.
Any other comments, questions from the council? Thank you.
Can I have just a second?
Yes.
When we were tasked with the ordinance slash, uh, animal control officer, we didn't know exactly which direction we were gonna go. We have, uh, Ted Young, Lieutenant Tucker, and I, these guys meet with us bi-weekly to strategize and give different avenues and directions we wanna go, and I think we've been quite successful. I just wanted to shout out, well, Rose, she actually hit the ordinance, uh, ring, uh, and then over to, uh, to Dan, who's done a wonderful job, uh, along with the, of course, the animal shelter right there, and of course, uh, my, I am a man here, keeping it up, Lieutenant Tucker. And I can't forget, means that he's here, a little bit of, uh, inspirational, uh, religious, uh, touch there with the chaplain. I know he blesses us well, but I just wanted to shout out, it's an excellent crew, and I bless that.
Doing a great job, man. Thank you.
Thank you. Did, did we have numbers, Rose? How many animals are you picking up or?
So we actually just created an Excel sheet so we can track that.
Okay.
In February, I think there was at least fifteen that we were able to just bring home instead of the shelter, so fifteen at least avoided.
Awesome. That's always better, especially if you're out, to just take them right to the owner and not have to take them back to them.
Yeah, it creates a great opportunity, too, to talk with the owners and give them some assistance on how to keep them home.
Are, is it a similar, uh, approach, and we're giving them kind of a soft touch and then letting them know, hey, if this continues to happen, then?
Yes and no. Most of it's just a conversation, not so much a letter, because there's an animal also, it's gotta be a little bit more quick, but. And most of them, I just have a conversation with, let them know, just bring it at home this time. If it's out again, there may be future consequences, and most of them have kept them home.
Gotcha. Good. Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
Josh Bake, Mr. Bake, sorry. Roosevelt City proclamation recognizing World Kidney Day.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm here on behalf of Bruce Tippett, one of our local reporters. He is a recipient of a kidney transplant a couple of years ago, and it saved his life. And he has requested that Roosevelt City authorized Mayor Bird to sign a proclamation just showing that we support World Kidney Day. It's celebrated on the second Thursday in March. What it really does is, I'll just read their mission statement. World Kidney Day aims to raise awareness of the importance of our kidneys to our overall health and reduce the frequency and impact of kidney disease and its associated health problems worldwide. So we do have a dialysis center here in Roosevelt, and one thing Bruce, Bruce has really been pushing is just awareness of the importance of our kidneys and how they help us. Um, Viral City is gonna be adopting a proclamation tomorrow as well, and so we're just requesting support from the council that we just authorized Mayor to sign a, a generic proclamation that we support World Kidney Day and raising awareness for all those individuals that have suffered and, or need support with their kidneys.
Thanks, Josh. Um, does anybody know Bruce that, that's just from City? Yeah, he's, he's a good dude.
He's incredible.
Really nice guy. Super grateful for him being able to get that surgery, and he's very passionate about us, so just for that reason, I'm ready to sign, but.
Yeah.
Any thoughts from the council?
I, I think we should support. I don't know why we wouldn't, so I would move to, to support or have the mayor sign that proclamation, so.
Perfect. And I don't have the proclamation here tonight. We wanted to make sure it was in conjunction with Virals, so they could do a new story about both communities, how you get it supported, so. I don't have it here tonight, but as long as you would approve that, I can get it to Mayor.
Okay, so we do have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Baird. All in favor?
Aye.
That looks unanimous. That passes. And tell Bruce, looking forward to seeing him again. Okay, the next item is the flagpole silhouette proposal. Uh, so we've had some people in the community. Uh, we have the massive flag up there on the hill, and there's been talks about putting some type of a memorial, uh, soldier or something that overlooks, uh, that's next to the flagpole and overlooks the cemetery. And so there's a couple of people, particularly the, you know, the council, I don't, has talked about it. We've got, um, also Dan, Karen, and Gary Lord that are really pushing to get something up there, and they've got a lot of people that are willing to donate time, uh, resources, cement, whatever it takes to get this done, but we wanted to bring this idea to the council to see what the council's appetite is for doing something like that, and also just to give a few examples of what we can put up there and to see if there's a strong opinion on what they'd like to see, so.
I know there's a, Mayor, there's a, uh, fund, Zeke, maybe can help, uh, I think it was fifteen thousand that set aside for that, um, specifically for some sort of?
Yeah, and this one, that is true. There is money set aside for a memorial that, uh, I couldn't gather.
Yeah.
But that, this one will be independent, so that, that will go to, um, a more formal memorial down below by the, in the west area. So in the center of that, that's what that money will go for, and so Dan, he's well aware of that and several that were on that committee prior. Uh, and so we're hoping this will be a kickoff to that, so.
I think they've got the funds for it, correct?
Yeah, they, they feel like they have everything they need, uh, to go ahead and do this without any, any assistance from the city. They just need permission. So there's a couple of things that, that the council needs to be aware of. First thing is the land that we wanna put this on is DOT property. And so we've sent a letter to, uh, the governor and his assistant, his, uh, senior, uh, director, to have them look at this and, and talk to DOT to see if that's something that we can get in Eastman or get the land deeded to Roosevelt City. So that's, that process has been, um, put in place just to see if we can get the land. Um, if we can get the land, then we have the mechanism in place with these donations and, and other volunteers that we can actually build. But then we just have to have the approval from the council, and we wanna know the council's opinion on the silhouette that might go up there. And I'm glad the police force is here, too, because this, this is something that probably near and dear to you guys as well. There's just a, so first of all, I guess the question is, uh, does the council feel like that would be an appropriate use of that? And, uh, and if so?
What? Go ahead, Dave.
So would the, uh, so this would just basically be a silhouette in front of the flag looking out towards the cemetery?
Yeah.
Um, would it, would the lights on at night or just the day?
So what they do, the plan is to put, to set the silhouette on about a three-foot pillar of cement, so it'll sit up just above the ground a little bit, and then have lights coming off the cement that will shine on the silhouette. It'll be a two-sided silhouette, um, for stability and, um, basically for stability, just so it's not one plate standing up there.
Sort of like a V?
Yeah, it, it will have a, it'll have a slight angle to it, and, uh, lights on both sides. And, you know, in the daytime or at night, I think it would be, um, uh, so. And you know, in the daytime or at night, I think it would be um something that would be really neat to have. Twelve feet is what they're approximating, it'll have to need to be twelve feet tall.
That was my conclusion.
Yeah, and so uh that's what they're shooting for. I think it would be good, once it's approved, to still do a couple of, and Ryan brought this up, do a couple of, you know cardboard cutouts stand up there and hold them twelve foot tall and just see how that looks before we pull the trigger. So all of that will be decided. But again, the, the silhouette itself is what we're looking at, making sure that everybody feels comfortable with, with what would be up there.
Yeah, I, I've talked to Gary about this quite often, I was just curious, Ryan, did you have any concerns up there about the flagpole since you've been up there a lot?
Nope, we, we've got it kinda set right now pretty good. We've got a gate in so the traffic is limited and there's cameras already. And we'll be facing this red where it's at and the power's already there. A lot of expanses are done, so.
So it's just mainly just the monument itself they would have to put in with the cement and the?
One of the things that we talked about too is just making sure there's plenty of parking where the gate is so that people can get out and they can walk, have a nice path that would go that they can walk around and look, take pictures, whatever they wanna do without taking a vehicle in there. Because I think it, it's already an attraction, I've noticed every time I go up there, I've seen somebody at, at least one other person up there, you know, looking at it and I've seen them walking in and taking pictures. And then this will just add to that, it might grow into a, a little bit as large a memorial that is maybe a walk-in only. But uh something that I think the public will, will appreciate. So this is an idea um that Dan just put one together, this is an idea that he had, and then we had two or three other
Right.
Ideas to just pitch to the council and see.
This is the twelve foot.
We wanted to try, we wanted to think of something that wasn't too detailed, because when you get all that detail, you can't really tell what it is from a long distance. So we wanted something that has
I think the top one has less, slightly when you go to that second one, Ryan, there's just some little pieces that I think the more solid it is, the better it'll weather. Does you see how like on that gun and on his helmet?
Oh yeah, the dog tags on the gun?
Just, yeah, just like if you simplified that a little, I think there's just a few less little pieces, I don't know.
And I think you simplified that one a little bit already, didn't you? Anyway, but I think you're right, Councilman Goodrich is, yeah, I think we can, if we give a general uh idea of what we like then we can modify it a little bit before we go to cut it.
I think the cutout idea is good, because if we have a couple we really like, one with a little more detail and one with less, we can just see what it might look like.
And I think a good way to approach it, because we still have to wait for the land to be approved. Um if we can get council's approval to move forward, uh then, then we can, we can start creating. I think they just wanna make sure that they don't go any further, because they've already lined up a lot of the stuff, but they don't wanna go any further until they know that it's a, it's a green light. And maybe what we could do is give them the green light, but let's do a couple of mockups and then I mean, do you feel comfortable with a small, would that committee making a final decision on that with a few of us involved? Or do you wanna be brought back to the council for a final approval on maybe the, the final design?
I think I'm good with them making the decision, I don't, I, I, I mean personally, I trust what they're doing. I think Councilman Goodrich made a good point, if there's a lot of detail, wind blowing through there could cause some issues or people were to get in there, I mean, I, I hope no one vandalized, but if it's easy to, you know, even just play with, you know, they might but, but I would trust that they would, you know, do that, I think they can do that. I don't, Councilman Goodrich myself, we're on the interfaith, that we can help with that and I, I know you're involved with that as well, Mayor, so I think we can just I, I would, I would just personally move to approve on condition we get appro, uh approval from the state. Right, because if we don't get approved from the state, we're gonna have to look at something different anyway, so, right?
So motion to approve, condition on uh jacking the land from the state and then uh allowing the Parks, Parks and Rec Committee along with the appointed um councilman to, to make a final decision on?
Is it our, is it our park and rec or would it be?
Sorry, interfaith, yeah.
I say interfaith is the one that's been involved.
You, yeah, you're right, interfaith with the appointed and assigned council, council people. Did you get all that? Okay, is that what you wanted?
Yeah.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor, do we have any other discussion or thoughts? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Are they opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. So yeah, this will be really exciting, I'll let uh, I'll let Dan know, but Ryan, if you'll, if uh where you're over projects and things, we'll get that group together, maybe we'll get some, a couple of cutouts to involve some of the interfaith folks.
We meet next Wednesday.
You, you mentioned a couple of councilmen who?
Uh Aubrey and Audrey, sorry, and um, there's an
We're on the interfaith, on IR.
Yeah, there's a, I know another, Aubrey.
Yours.
Okay. Well, next is the expansion approval.
Uh, Councilman Bear and I had just a question or at least about the, the LiDAR, uh the police, I just wondered what it was for, I hadn't seen that.
So the, yeah, this was with some grant money that we got, and it has to meet some specific criteria. And so the LiDAR, I don't know if you guys don't know, most police have a radar, goes back and forth and does it, the LiDAR is way more accurate. And you actually point it at the car, so not to get too, too detailed, if you have like four cars that are coming towards you and the radar goes off, you're not sure which car is hitting it yet, depending on which one's the the one that's going the fastest is probably that one. The LiDAR
Or the mayor's car.
Good information.
And everybody knows which one you drive, that's true. Because you, you pick a specific car and it's way more accurate.
Okay.
So this is, it's just, it's grant money, it'll be totally reimbursed. Um I think it's the alcohol, is it the alcohol?
It is the alcohol money and that's last year's alcohol money, this year, we've been given nineteen thousand, we need to find something for, so.
And it, it's very specific, it has to be for, you know, private and
Alcohol enforcement, a few other things like that, yeah.
I saw it on there, I, I, I saw his place, I just couldn't remember what it, we may have talked about it in sergeant's meeting, but I didn't remember.
Well, we brought it up in sergeant's meeting, but that's what it is, it's a LiDAR, uses light.
When you hear LiDAR, a lot of time you're thinking of the, the uh crafts that go up and then they like take pictures of the land and so I was thinking maybe it was something that way.
Same philosophy.
Not that cool though.
No, but that's what it does, it goes up and then it can, it can take pictures of the and you can then pull away like the foliage and different things and see stuff, it's kinda cool.
They use it for uh leak detection out on the, you know, on the industry as well.
There may be some radar detectors that detect that.
We'll say yes.
So that's just for one unit too, right?
No, I think it's for four.
That's good, okay.
They're, they're more expensive than the radar.
Any other questions?
I would move we approve the uh financials expenditures.
Have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Are they opposed?
I'm glad you're here to explain that though, that helps.
Mr. Bake?
Aubrey, great, um just wanted to give everybody a heads up, the legislative session ends this week.
Hallelujah.
We've been over nine hundred and ten bills and you're working on fifty-two resolutions, so just a little bit stuff for us to go over, but that's going over and nothing super duper crazy. Of course, we'll give you updates on a lot of things that do pass final versions. Um but we've been working with Utah leading cities and towns, even tracking our three hundred bills very closely, so constant communication with our legislators there. Then the other thing I just wanted to talk about was Chief stole my thunder, but in a very, very good way. I just wanna give another shout out to Alana Rose and especially Dan with our code enforcement. It is fantastic, those are very tough jobs to do and not a lot of times they have a lot of good feedback, so they need to hear that. They're doing a fantastic job and they're top notch, so.
Is, is Drew keeping up on the, because I know we may have to adjust some of our policies or codes in Roosevelt City, so is Drew, Drew involved with that as well?
Yes, and there's a training coming up in a week and a half where they run out, overall land use changes. So we're gonna know what they've changed in our land use ordinance, so we can update that again. Stay right on top of it, so we don't have to go through a monster process.
I'm sure glad they put so much time and effort in creating so many laws for us.
I'd say it on record, you all those politicians.
I'm not real happy with them at, at the university level, they're, they're taking a lot of money from the university, so.
Well, it's, it's been an interesting nine hundred and some bills, you'd think we had things mostly figured out before this year, but apparently
Yeah, Steve's covering it.
And then Chief does have one thing on the legislative, before I turn the time over to him, are there any questions for me here?
The only thing I would say is, and I talked to Grant, well, we've talked about it in admin meeting, but uh sent a bill three thirty, I think it was three thirty seven. That one's gonna be major one that's, in my opinion, an overstep out of the state and, and as far as local control and enforcing certain things. Kinda like, I think it was uh two sixty-four last year, did the same thing with, you know, forcing certain zoning and anti-densey housing come on municipalities and something.
And that's been the big push in leading cities and towns, helping cities is local control. We all know local government manages the best, so thank you.
We have no idea what we're doing, so we're glad the state's stepping in and taking the reins.
Well, turn it over to Mark. I have been inundated with phone calls since last Friday, nine o'clock, Representative Clancy, Utah Patrol Lieutenant Rappich, or Colonel Rappich and wants to, a whole bunch of others, they are wanting to uh pull together uh officers or agencies that also help the apprehension of uh Sergeant Bill Duthier, the San Quentin Sergeant was murdered last year. We did the high speed chase on him here. They want to recognize us in an open session, involve the house and the staff. I don't have a date and time when that'll happen, as soon as I do, I'll let Mr. Bake know and you might be able to see it alive. They're asking for uh the ones that had been involved in it, coincidentally, the department head was dumb enough to answer his phone that day, so I was involved. And then we also have Cory uh
Reed.
Reed, who also started the chase, so we've been asked to go up there, but I'll let you know again. I thought actually, uh and, and I thought they'd have a date and time by now, but they're scrambling. But if that doesn't come out, I think it was a great shot in the arm, Roosevelt has their name right down in front, so good luck.
Good job, thanks too. Do you have anything as far as committee reports tonight?
Audrey probably has something from interfaith.
Interfaith has a preparedness fair this Saturday, anyone that wants to come can. Just here at Crossroads from one to four. Um and they've been getting word out, so.
Did we settle on a date for the cleanup?
The twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Of April, yeah.
Of course, sure, okay.
That's coming up as well.
Perfect. Anything else? Um just quickly, the gun range, uh so the gun range will be open when we get the gate in? If we did approve the gate, I'm just wondering where we're at with?
So everything's been ordered and, and we're just waiting, I talked to Jason today, he's saying two to three weeks. And I go with WCF, we're hoping to do it by the end of April for an opening on that, so it's not a date solid right now, but that's kinda the forecast we're looking at.
When you get um, when you get all the dates lined up and you know for sure when the gate's going to be there and I'd like to do a soft opening, won't be a grand opening, but a soft opening, that'll help people know that, you know, what's going on, maybe we can have a little event, maybe a shooting event or something like that. We, Eric Major does a lot of those, but we can give a chance in the bill where they help us and, and do some type of a smaller just event, let people know that it's open.
So I'll, I'll set up one more meeting too, so when we're comfortable with setting a solid date, we'll have a meeting with that committee and we can plan the grant, the soft opening.
What day was the archery thing, was that in May?
That was in May.
Okay, anything else, Mayor?
We did put out a post on social media today about the gun range. There was a lot of misinformation going on on Facebook about windows opening, where's the location, everything, so we just put out a post saying it is coming, just giving people a heads up to give some excitement. No specifics, but we did want people to know it is coming and it's not open yet.
Well, I've seen Jethlyn Caeroli out there a few times.
She can grab it, I'll grab it.
I felt bad, I was, I was, you know, cranking the style, they were in their, their spot.
Mayor, for future discussion, I don't know if we need to discuss or not, but uh I met with Superintendent Young at uh Kings Peak Elementary and I'm concerned about the busing, parent pickup, parent drop off, all that. The congestion there is miserable, if we have an emergency at the hospital, getting someone in there could be a problem. And so I've asked Kirby to meet with uh Mr. Young, one of the solutions might be on the north side, that, that north parking lot on the north side of the school, if we were to carry a, a road back past, behind the gym there towards those homes and then, and then kinda bring it around. Uh maybe we could somehow come out, I don't know, maybe by the Baptist church or maybe something, but I just think that there needs to be something there, because I'm really concerned if we have an emergency, all those kids, all the you know, ambulance coming at that time, we could have a serious, you know, uh issue there. And, and so I've asked uh Mr. Young with the district as well as I've asked Kirby to get with them. I just think we may need to discuss that at some time if there's some plan, but that road would go right up against that fence there on the north side and, and on the other side of the fence is our walking path. And so I, I, I don't know if that caused anything, but that's why I wanted to bring it up, uh because I think it's important that we do. But that was one of the suggestions, if there's another suggestion, uh the one they had would be on the south side, bringing the buses around. Uh but I just didn't think that, that puts everything right there by the emergency room entrance, where if we could move the buses to the north, put the parents and, and have a different way out, uh I think that would help obviously police and others, so.
Yeah, I missed our Councilman Bozen Barki, if you would include Lieutenant Tucker and I.
Okay, I'll, I'll mention that to Kirby and uh Mr. Young, I think that's good. I just, I, I feel like that, that has just become such a mess there that we need to somehow mitigate that.
I agree.
And so I just bring that up for future, because I did talk to Mr. Young and, and walked through the school and, and then that was one of the suggestions that I brought up and I, but I'm not trying to say, I know anything, I just said what if we did it this way, then, then I suggest we get with Kirby Wolfinger and, and I apologize, I didn't think about getting the police involved, but definitely we wanna, whatever we can do to make that a, a better situation, because I don't want people not being able to get to the emergency room, because we've got kids and stuff, it's, it's a mess there.
Yeah, I think a good idea would be um let's, let's check with one of our Jones and Mill family, whether our city engineer just hasn't see what a traffic study would cost to be there and then if it's something that we could participate with the split district on and I don't think it'd be too awful expensive, but then we have a pretty good designer idea of
Well, and I'm thinking the county might even be willing, you know, if we can get some road base and then, you know, the city could maybe help somehow with working with the police and others, a, a, an exit point where it's just one way, so we're not trying to bring them back by the hospital, but get them away, right, if we could somehow do that. Uh but I'm also concerned about our walking path and making sure we don't disrupt any of that as well, so.
Yeah, Danny would be not very happy if we disrupt.
No, and I don't, and I don't think we need to, but we definitely need to look at that. So I just, I thought I'd put that on our radar for now, because I think it's something we need to definitely look at. See, that, and that's what I was thinking, is if you go to the north side of the school and right where it's corners there, yeah, if you just put a driveway that through there, just keep the road going, they don't use that field anyway. And then if we just kinda curved around and, and came south there, um I, I'm just not sure where's a good place for that. And then if we just kind of curved around and, and came south there, um, I, I'm just not sure where's a good place for that.
Behind the houses?
Yeah, I don't know if south is the best, but that, but, um, and I know there's a lot in between. The, the, the school district owns just a little strip there going east and west to the Baptist church. And there's an empty lot there, but I think someone has like a shed or something in that little area.
Um, so? Do they have an easement?
I don't know. That's, I, that's what I'm wondering. I think we need some analysis, but I was thinking if there's some way we could come out there on the Neola Highway there, um, we might need another traffic light, but, but I'm not opposed to that. Kind of mitigating some of the speed people coming off the Neola Highway into Roosevelt might be helpful.
Especially those one on hills there.
Right.
Well, traffic gets backed up.
Can you catch up on that?
Hey, I'm way up there. That, that line would have to be a long ways for it to?
Anyway, I just, I just want you to know that I talked to the superintendent, I, I spoke with Kirby, asked him to get with them. I think it's something we can help mitigate. Uh, I think the district obviously would be willing to help fund some of the stuff. I don't know what they have, but being a building project, I think they could help. But if we could help as well, we'd want to be a partner in some form to make sure it makes sense, right, to the city and, and able to, to work with them on that.
I think doing a, lining up a traffic study and that's not much cost at all. And if it is, then we can bring it before the council. And then when there's something, uh, a, uh, solution, then we can definitely look at that. But it doesn't cost much to at least analyze.
Right. Anyway, thank you. I appreciate that. That was just my item for future discussion.
Great. Anything else before we go into a closed session?
Do we need to go into closed session?
No.
I, I would move we adjourn then unless someone has something else.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, second by Councilman Goodrich, all in favor?